Works facility was going to be on the south side of the road.
Okay.
Which have been one of our major hookups, and we were going to run stuff from there. Well, the council stopped that project, and that's when we started looking at different options for the sewer line down the highway.
Okay. So for $100,000 more in construction fees, we were going to stay on the south side of the road because of that? It doesn't make sense what you just said.
That was the way we first designed everything.
Okay. Phyllis, you have anything?
All right.
Go for it.
I'm looking at 1, 2, 3, and 4 together, because I don't understand any of this. So I see that Amendment 1, if we go to Part 9, Amendment 1 was 63,000.
Whoa, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let's stick to item number 8.
But I can't understand this till I understand the others.
Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought you were going to item number 9.
No, I'm looking at Page 2, 2, it's showing all these engineer changes that we've done. Because it started at 163, then we had an Amendment 1 for 63,000, which you call Amendment 2 over here. And then we've got another amendment for, no, Amendment 6. You've got 63 as Amendment 1, then you've got Amendment 2 for 2,500. Now we've got Amendment 3 for 15, and then we've got a 4 for 30. So originally, the one you're talking about Medina Valley, southern side of the road, was 163,000?
No, that was the original for the whole project.
Well, but that included, why did you make an Amendment 1 then?
We didn't include the going to the Medina Valley High School.
What did it include?
Just the project as it now sits.
So you didn't project for any sanitary lines?
Down FM 471, no.
So you were just going to do it for the Public Works and the dog shelter?
No, we hadn't planned anything down FM 471.
This was 21, 14?
Yeah, it's when it first started, first started, yes.
Then Amendment 1 for 63 was...
Was Engineering 2, put the sewer line down to the high school area.
All right, so we have a hookup with the high school?
No, we haven't done anything. That was just the engineering costs and stuff to do, so we could come back with a change order for the council, for the contractor to do that.
Have we done that change order?
No.
God. All right, so we've got an Amendment 1, 63,000, that's going to need a change order that we haven't done yet. And is that going to be a change order to Engineering 2, or just to the construction?
Just construction.
How much is that going to be?
I have a contractor's estimate, but...
It's a little more than 200.
Huh?
It's a little more than 200.
Yeah. The constru-, I mean, I have a contractor's estimate, and it's 400 and some thousand dollars.
So 400 and something thousand to get a sanitary line to the high school?
Correct.
And then you've got an Amendment 2, of course, we haven't paid for that, but we did pay for the amendment.
Yeah, because that's part of the owners' agreement.
All right, then Amendment 2 for 2,555?
With some modifications in, was it manholes?
No, that was just Chester shoes.
Excuse me, oh, Chester shoes property. We had to do some, we had to, because we found the cemetery, we had to re-align.
You did accommodate the cemetery.
Yeah, we had to.
Is he on the north or the south?
It's on the north side, but we didn't know the cemetery was there when they designed it originally, so we had to modify the dirt, you know, the direction of the pipe, and that cost some extra engineering because they didn't...
And you're asking, okay, so he's on the north?
North side, the cemetery is.
And right now you're asking that we put it on the north?
But...
When you had already decided...
It's in a different, this line goes across, turns and goes...
Bear with me, I don't understand.
It goes across, and then it turns and goes what I would call northwest, but then it turned and went straight up to Tractor Supply through Shoe Property. Well, we found out if we did that, we hit, we went across the cemetery, so the alignment had to be changed.
Let me interrupt this for a second, if you don't mind, and you can continue. The packet that's put together for us to look at this has absolutely no diagrams in it. Nobody is able to look at what you're talking about. And I think that's the confusing part, is we do not get enough, we do not get enough information.
Well, I've already got it, what, 400,000?
Yes.
For Amendment 2. Now you're coming up with this other thing that's going to cost us...
I have...
Phyllis, we don't have to do this.
I'm just trying to understand it, it's frustrating.
I know, it is frustrating.
I have a packet, I mean, this has some, it has some KSA engineering numbers and contract number, but I have the diagrams in it. So I can give you the diagram, but I can't guarantee the numbers are accurate. Well, they were done quite a while back.
You have anything else, Phyllis?
I just, I can't approve anything till I understand it.
I understand.
I have to know four amendments.
I understand.
All right, and pause.
And are you done, Phyllis, or Paul?
The, so we're looking at the additional design and serving services for the extension of the sanitary sewer line on the south side of, on the north side of 471, instead of the south side. And you said there's a, going to be an $85,000 savings from the construction costs?
Well, if you take the 15, take this off, about 100,000, yeah.
Okay, and the reason that the line was originally designed on the south side was because that's where our facility was going to be?
That's where Public Works was going to go, that was where the Animal Control Center was going to go.
And the difference between designing that on the north side and going underneath the highway again was...
We would have had to bore the highway multiple times.
And that made up $85,000?
I don't know about that. I haven't researched that, but we would have had to bore it multiple times to get to all the facilities.
It's going to have to happen eventually somewhere anyway, because every time...
If we ever build out there, yeah, we'll have to bore it.
Aren't we bored already with the gravity line going to the lift station?
But that's a lot farther north than what these facilities were.
But won't it be gravity? I'm sorry, Paul.
That's all right. I'm just frustrated with the...
I understand what you're saying.
The more expensive design in the first place, and now we're spending additional money to get it to where we need it. That's all I've got, just frustration.
Isn't the line from the school back to lift station going to be gravity?
Yes.
So you don't need to bore, you already got one. We already have one.
No, we haven't built it. No, not going that direction.
High school goes to the car.
No, but I'm saying, you said that if we kept it on the other side, that we would have had to bore. Well, it's already there, so it'll be gravity from the school back to the...
If we'd have kept it on the south side, we wouldn't have to bore anything.
Yeah. Well, you still got to have the bore to go...
To Highway 90.
Over to Highway 90.
Yeah, that bore is done, but it's farther north than what the facilities were, there was no way to connect to them without running the line down to the high school.
Phil, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, Larry, don't you have the design of the existing?
Yeah, I have them here. Like I said, there's numbers that I don't, I mean, I'll give you the packets, but...
Do you have anything, Phil?
Well, I guess you're going to hand out the drawing.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
I think I understand, but really what we're talking about today...
Thank you.
Is design.
So, you can, because in my head, I understand this. So I understand it. So basically, what we're asking today is we either, we can approve this, knowing that it's going to be $85,000 less.
Or differently.
Or we can stay with the existing instructions due to what design is, but we know it's going to cost $100,000 more. So what we're, this is something that came, and the reason it was originally done is that the council, the previous council said we're going to use this airport property to put the Public Works and everything else. But now the current council says, no, we don't want to do that. So now, because of that, this option has come up to, as a method of saving money. We could have just continued on the thing, and, but because of this, hey, there's a cost savings here if you all want to realize the cost savings. So that's really what we're going on tonight. It's the cost savings.
I just have one more question.
Yeah, let him finish. Please, let him finish.
So that I understand. Okay.
I'll come back to you, but let everybody have the chance to speak, and then we'll come back. Eric?
Well, you probably know...
Were you done, Phil?
I am done, yes. Yeah, you probably know what my vote would be to begin with.
Okay.
But the question, I do have some questions, okay? I realize that there's still $575,000 sitting outside on our loan, that we're just wringing our hands that we've got to spend that money, come hell or sewer water, because that's what we do, right? Nobody's going to sleep unless we spend that money. Let me ask you a question. We got an east side lift station, right? It's pretty, it's done? Like, everything's done, motors are in, lights are on?
It's pretty close to done, yes.
Right. I mean, we're ready to flip the switch?
No, there's still some line to run and some other things to do.
Okay, so how much, how much more are we going to spend in that regard? We got any more money?
That has been figured into the number you have left.
That 575?
No, the 575 is what's left after paying for everything that's left on the east side lift station.
Everything, so if we finish the project the way it is right now...
We'll come out 575 ahead.
We're actually not 575 ahead, but we're, yeah. Okay. So without spending that 575,000, okay? You can flip the switch, and that sewer plant's pumping sewage.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, okay? This, what we're talking about now, are additional runs...
To allow more sewer to go to the east side.
To service potentially...
More customers.
More customers.
Yes.
Okay? So, I mean, my perspective is, when those customers come, they can pay for it, okay?
Absolutely.
I mean, it's their, if they want sewer to that area, they can pay for it, we'll pay it out of our impact fees. I understand, it may be more expensive at that time, but I hate to say that the ratepayers of Castroville, if you look at the entire plant project, from, you know, originally when we talked about 7,500,000 on the original plant, now it's up to, what, 13 million or something like that?
No, 9.
Oh, 9 million.
$15 million out there in progress.
$15 million. The ratepayers have taken a big bite out of the sandwich, okay? When it comes to, as it comes to bringing in additional development, okay? All of this was done so that we would have infrastructure already in the ground, ready to go, ready to pump up the hill, right? Because the Death Star's on its way, and they're going to bring all these rooftops and businesses, so we need to get ahead of the curve. We've done that. The ratepayers have spent...
We're partially ahead of the curve.
Well, I'm just telling you, the ratepayers, from my perspective, from my constituents, the people who I represent in District 4, they've done. They've eaten enough of the sandwich.
Well, I understand that. I'm going to ask Maria a question, Councilman Chair. The money we've already borrowed is already, we're paying the principal interest in the budget as it now sits, for all that money.
I know. I know, that's what I'm saying.
So if we use it to improve the infrastructure, it's already being paid for, there is no added expense to the taxpayers, we're going to use it to extend so we can hopefully put some more customers on.
So in other words, we got to spend that 575?
No, if you guys vote we don't, we won't, it'll just...
But I mean, that's just the impression that I just got.
Well, I'm trying to use, I'm trying to use the money we have for a low interest rate, which is a business menu, you understand.
I understand it, I understand.
To get us the potential to get customers built on the money that we have.
I understand it, but the perspective of my constituents, the guys who like me to represent them, are saying...
But it is enough, it's done. They're already paying for all the money.
Absolutely, that's what they're saying. We're already paying for all the money. We're not paying for any more additionals going into, if we can save 600,000 or 800,000, let's do it, pull it off, let the developers pay for it. That's their opinion.
Dick?
This could be the extension to the high school?
If you look in your packet, and I'll try to explain to you real quick...
I'm looking at a picture, so which picture might we look at?
Okay, the first, if you look at the first diagram, that was the original Option 1, to extend up across the road, bore under 90, so we could serve Alsatian Oaks and the projects that are going to develop on the north side of Highway 90. That's the first drawing.
That's where we are now, we're past that now.
Well, that's, no, we're not that. Everything in blue is proposed. Everything in red is what is the original project.
All right.
City Council authorized us to move forward with design last summer to go to the high school.
Right.
And that's the project we're talking about right now.
Okay, now, the KSA has come back with some other options. If you go to the next, I'm not going to look at the numbers right now. If you go to the next drawing, you'll see the red line and you'll see a blue line going on down the north side of Highway 90. Okay, that's an option they give us, they say to serve Alsatian Oaks. I've kind of informed them it's one property line too short. It needs to come a little farther. But they did that and gave us a little price. The next drawing, which is another two pages down, is the extension from the manhole there on the...
Option 2, is that the one where they're going to have?
I'm about, what, 1, how can I know, 2, 3, 4, 5 pages in, which is Option 2.
At the bottom, Larry, it says Option 2.
Option 2.
It says Option 2.
Okay.
If you go two more pages, it says Option 1, I kind of put these out of order. And the blue line shows us extending the sewer main up to the corner store, so we can get the corner store and the security bank hooked in.
Question. If we run that sewer line, are they required to hook up to it?
No.
Yes. But they're within feet of the...
We have some, on the proposed ones, the only one required is the county. We have a contract with them, they have to hook in. I think we go by, we're close enough to a residence and to the vet clinic that they'll be required to hook in. When we go to the security bank in that area, I guess, I'm not sure. I'd have to...
So what are you going to do, force annex them?
I do know that when we go by Tractor Supply...
I guess the question is Alsatian Oaks, are they required to hook up?
Yes.
What's Alsatian?
It's a development, housing development that's been proposed for...
But you're saying that Option 2 doesn't reach the Alsatian Oaks property?
No, it's one property line too short.
Well, that's, and, it's a new development. Is there any information that indicates that a gravity line will flow from Alsatian Oaks to this manhole at the lift station?
Yeah, it'll have, well, it'll be a line.
The answer's yes to that, sir.
Okay, let's have, we got four different conversations going on here, and it was talking about Alsatian Oaks.
Yes, Mr. Collins' property.
No. We're talking about the development that exists, that exists right now.
That's not Alsatian Oaks.
Alsatian Oaks is Mr. Collins'.
Right, I'm talking about, I'm talking about this on Victory Lane.
Victory Lane, yes.
I don't even know what it is.
Eventually, they may want to hook onto the system because they're all on septic, and as their septic system ages, they may...
Are they required to?
No.
No.
If we run the line down the road?
Okay.
Well, if you look...
All right, let's not go there any farther with that, because that's not even a...
You have to look at our ordinances and stuff, traffic, all that.
Okay. I know you had something else that you wanted, but let me, give me just, give me just a second, and this is, this is my thoughts about this. A lot of infrastructure out there to prepare for development. It's in place. I believe that developers should be paying to do the rest of it. And there's been, you know, I've asked this question quite a bit, and I think I've been misled about it, but I think it's pretty clear that the 575,000, we may be paying interest on it, that's left on the loan that you say we got to use. We don't have to use it, we can, we can give it back. I mean, we don't have to use it. That's a half a million dollars that we can...
I defer that to the city administration.
They will let you pay it back, but at, toward the end of the loan, they will not...
That's okay, but it's money that we're not, we're not going to be obligated to. I don't believe that we should, I don't believe that we should pass any of this. I was against when we approved very narrowly to design the sewer line down to the high school the last time. It has no customers. If, I know that, and I don't want to divulge too much information, because I want to keep it, you know, so that the developments, you know, this works out, but I am under the understanding from more than one developer that they're willing to pay to have this, without us borrowing money to do it. I would rather, I would rather have, and I think, I think as a city, we got to do a better job out there contacting these people to see... I would rather have development agreements, okay? Go to these people, get development agreements, so that we have guaranteed payments, because even, even that forced main that we put under Highway 90 is sitting there, it has no customers. There is nothing that is going to go into that thing. You know, we already have a forced main that handles a dealership that's connected.
But it goes away.
Huh?
It goes away.
I understand it does, but we're already servicing that. I personally don't believe that this council should pass any of these expenditures. I think that we should wait, and we should have development agreements, because there is people lining up, up and down that highway, to do this stuff. And I believe that it's time for them to start paying, rather than the city.
I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I want to just make one comment if I can.
Okay.
I've set through half a dozen or more agreements, or meetings with people wanting to develop. Maurice set through them, Laura set through them. Their question is, they want to develop, they'll develop their sewer system on their property, they'll do their distribution system, they'll get their roads and everything, where can I hook into you?
Right out in front of their property.
No, at this time, I can't.
Guarantee is so many hookups a year to pay for this loan. This is a novel idea, let's make the developer pay for infrastructure. We have had a very poor attitude in this city about saddling debt on, to the citizens, the 2,800 citizens that live in Castroville. And it's all coming in the utility system. People are crying about their utility rates. And I don't, I don't want to go for any more debt. I think we need to stop this and negotiate good development agreements with these developers and let them pay for it.
I have no problem with that either, Mayor.
Okay. Phyllis, you had something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, the question, my question is, does it pay?
Last one? Go ahead. It's on, but it's on, it's on actually the next agenda, I don't...
Right, but it makes sense that we...
It's part of, it's all part of the same package.
So on this, you said, there's 575,000 funds remaining, but we still have to pay for the ISD line that's been programmed, and we still have to pay for, what is this? The northern line that you're putting, the one you're proposing to do again?
No, the northern line would be the one to the high school.
So in essence, we're going to be in the hole $95,000.
If we hit all these projects, we would be in the...
We have to do the Medina Valley?
No, we don't have to do any of it.
So we haven't done any of this yet?
No.
None of it?
Just the engineering expense.
We have done none of it.
Engineering.
Anything we paid for was engineering.
They got their money.
So theoretically, we've got 4, 6, 7, well, I don't, why didn't you do?
Theoretically, if we don't, if you vote for no, deny, and don't do anything, theoretically it will be between 550 to 575,000 left in that money. Because we still have to pay for the rest of the project that's being finished, the original east side lift station.
And how much is that?
The original cost?
On this?
Million, the construction cost was 1,913,466,24.
And with engineering, which is 274,000, that's without all this extra?
No, you got to, I've got those, I've got the two amendments in there tonight, so if you take them out, it's 228 something.
Ah, so that will go down to 228. So that saves us 50,000, so even that total cost will come down. Done? Mr. Mayor?
Phil? You know, we are making developers pay for this. The impact fee, which, you know, we've talked about the impact fee, and it's going to be with 1,000 hookups out there. They are paying, you know, what was, $6,000 a hookup?
I understand what you're saying.
But that's how the developer, that's how the developer pays us back. So we have a very low interest loan. We're also required to service the area. We are required by our agreements that the city has entered into with the state to say, we will service this area, otherwise somebody else will come and pick that up, and then, so this million dollars that we paid for this new line, we can now have customers for that to bring it up. Otherwise, we wasted a lot of money to put the million dollar line in, when we're not going to have customers hook up to it. But by, by putting it there forward, we now have impact fees. So that's how the state has set up, for the developers to pay us back for these expenses. So they've given these low interest loans. We will make more money, and by making even more money on these hookups, now we reduce the utility rates to our existing customers, because we have more people that we're now servicing. If we don't do this, and don't bring in this other service, that does put more burden on each individual ratepayer. By expanding the number of, like, for instance, if this is a car lot, by selling even more cars, then our expense doesn't change, but we're bringing in a lot more revenue. So we're doing it to impact fees, we vote to have these very expensive impact fees, we are doing that because it goes in. So, so we are requiring the developers to pay for this. The developers will pay for this through the impact fee.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but even the one running up to the corner store, we're picking up like 2 customers. The impact fees are not going to cover, it's not even close. This is, this is my point on this. I know that there are people there that are willing to pay for this before we do this. I know we can negotiate that. And I, you're right, the impact fees will pay us back, but that's when we start getting all these rooftops, and we get more development going. It's not at this point. I'm not saying not do this, but let's, let's be a little smart about it, let's, let's make the developers pay for this. Let's, let's negotiate better development agreements to where they're guaranteeing this payment. Because right now, if we put it in, we don't have a customer, we don't have anybody to pay these. There's not going to be any impact fees until some actual development happens. I don't think we're going to miss anything, we have the infrastructure out there, it's just doing these last parts. I, I just, I have given this a lot of thought, I really don't think we should spend this money. Just because it's there, it's like, I was thinking about it, it's like when you get your first credit card, and you max it out, and you keep maxing it out. Well, we've maxed this city out. It's, it has a debt service that's 80% of its lending capability, and I just, I want to see the spending stop, and try to do different things to get these things paid back. I'm not saying, Phil, I don't want to do this, I'm saying I want to do it a different way, and I'm hoping that the council will see this, because I think it'll work. Eric?
I have a question.
Okay. I'm sorry, Vic.
The line to the school, are we going to do the line to the school? And the reason why I ask is, aren't they tied into Lacoste now?
Yes.
So they're going to turn that, switch off and turn...
Not, they don't have to. They're not, they are not committed to do that. The only building that's committed, that I've been told that was willing to do it is the county building, that's it.
So the school is not committed, has not committed itself?
No, they are not, they are not committed. They are not committed to, they don't have to be. They are not committed to, they don't have to be.
Right.
They, they have an option, right?
They're obligated.
No, they already have one.
I know, because they finished their obligations, that was for so many years.
I don't know. I just think that the timing is poor to go any farther with this. All right, Vic, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Here's where the fuzzy math comes in.
Okay.
So, we run a line down, north side, right? The big customer on the block, right, would be the decon property, right? That's the bank.
There's not even a contract on it.
I'm just saying, that's the bank, right? That's, we're betting on the company, right? So, you run your line, your $400,000 line, all the way down 471, right? Well, I decide, I'm going to gate it, put in my own roads, put in my own septics with, yeah, with, just like they did on Protranca Road, okay? I'm going to build half million dollar house, homes, I'm going to gate it.
With the CCN, we have, they can do it.
I'm going to gate it and I'm going to put in our own treatment system.
That's the only way they could do it.
They can do it, they can put in their own treatment system, right? Just like Protranca Road.
If they, if they make it a private development.
If they make it a private development, they gate it and do it, okay? Now, they can do that.
But I'm going to tell you, and it can't happen, but I, in the last year, I have got multiple requests from Protranca Road people to see if they can get.
I understand, but I'm playing devil's advocate here, okay? You're right. I mean, the smart play would be LGI Homes with, you know, zero lot lines, put as many, I'm just saying, LGI Homes with zero lot lines, put them in, right, and hook as many rooftops as you can and connect it to the sewer. I mean, like, uh, on Highway 90. I mean, that's the smart play from a developer, right? That's what they do, okay? But the other play is to go the other way, right? To build half million dollar homes or bigger, gated and do it that way, right? Now, we're out, we just put, the ratepayers just took $400,000, put it in the ground, and they've got no customers.
The only way the ratepayers don't have that $400,000 is like the mayor suggested, at the end of this east side sewer operation, we send it back. Otherwise, they're already on the hook for it unless, till the end of the contract.
Right, but I mean, we got a pipe in the ground that's going to nowhere. It's like, you know, when they put in 211 at one point, they thought it was the road to nowhere.
I think we're taking, in my personal opinion, and, and it's just my personal opinion, we're taking a bigger risk of not getting the development entered by not having the main that can hook to than we are trying to get them to build a cement.
Well, the, the infrastructure's there, we just have to, I mean, all you have to do is hook it up to, it's just a pipe.
To a developer, it's not there because it's not setting up in front of his property.
It's just a pipe. If he wants it there, it can be there.
Okay. If the council wants it, I'm willing to do whatever the council thinks.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we do not approve the, oh, sorry, lost it, I went ahead. That we do not approve the.
15,000, 300.
15,000, 385, uh, change order number three.
Councilman Cherry's made a motion, do I have a second?
Amendment number three, I'm sorry, amendment number two.
Second.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Motion carries, three to two.
Mr. Mayor, they will pull item number 10.
No, there ain't no sense to go in the number.
Taking that up then.
Okay, um, we're going to pull item number nine, you can't, you can't build it if you can't approve the, so going on to item number 10, presentation acceptance of annual racial profiling report.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me here. I want to point out right here, fiscal impact, not, not applicable, so they're not asking for any money. So, it's a good thing, I think. Every year, uh, law enforcement agencies are required to do a racial profiling report. It's our bias report showing what we've done in our traffic, um, stops, who we've stopped, what we've done in those stops. We are not required to do a full, um, re, a full report, because we do have cameras and recording equipment in some of our vehicles, but we choose to do that for transparency reasons. We do the full report every year. And that's the tier two. Um, if you go to the first page of the report where it shows total stops of 3,703, that's the stops that we had for the year of 2017. Uh, it breaks down to the females and males, and you go down to the ethnicity, um, was race or ethnicity known prior to the stop? Um, it's tough to know, you can't tell just by passing somebody, you know, who they are or what race they are. Reason for stop, you see moving traffic violation, then you see vehicle traffic violation, that's going to be your equipment violations or something wrong with the trailer that they're pulling at the time. Was a search conducted? We did 23 searches of those 3,703 vehicles that we stopped. Um, seven of those searches were consent for search, 11 for probable cause, one for inventory, and one incident to arrest. Inventory means that if the vehicle had to be towed, uh, if you don't have driver's license, you don't have insurance, you get your vehicle towed until you can prove those two things. So, that would be subject to incident to arrest or inventory. Um, was contraband discovered in 67% of the vehicles that we searched? Yes, we found contraband in the vehicles. Description of contraband, drugs was 13%, currency zero, weapons one, alcohol zero, stolen property zero. Other two, those are open container. Um, it doesn't fall under alcohol, because it's a completely different arrest title inside the penal code. So, open, others are open container, uh, charges. Um, stop resulted in arrests, eight of them were arrests, violation of penal code, seven, outstanding warrant, one. Um, street address or approximate location of stop. This is a little misleading, because when we do a stop at Highway 90 in Fiorella, the computer catches Fiorella rather than Highway 90. That's something we're working on right now with CopSync, because those numbers, if you look at it, should really be reversed a bit, um, because most of our stops are on Highway 90. Um, and then written warning or citation as a result of the stop? Yes, 3662, no, 41. Uh, you'll see a change in that next year due to my no verbal warning policy that I instituted this, previous, this, this current year. Um, if we're going to pull people over, we're going to record why we did it. Uh, you won't get a written citation ticket, uh, moving violation, but you will get a written warning showing what my officer did on the stop, and you'll sign it acknowledging that that was you that he stopped. Um, but that's something that we, we instituted this, this calendar year, and so those numbers, numbers would be a, a zero on the no at that point. Um, that's the entirety of the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Vic, you have any questions?
Black and white.
Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I'm, just a few questions. Um, under the street address or appropriate location of stop, it says City Street 3695 of the total stops, and US Highway 8?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that, that's because when we stop at like that 90 in Fiorella, CopSync picks Fiorella. It captures Fiorella. So, yes, that's something that we're working with CopSync to get fixed. Um, it's just something that rolled out this year, last year it wasn't like that, so we're working on getting it.
Of the searches, we only conducted 23 searches in a year?
Yes, sir.
It seems low.
It, it does, but, you know, you have to have probable cause or, or reasonable suspicion or you have to have their consent. And a lot of time, and we don't want to push the consent part, I mean, if they can smell the marijuana, they have probable cause, um, stuff of that sort, or if you, if you arrest them, you're going to inventory the vehicle anyway, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking that 23 was a pit stop.
You, you'll probably see the numbers higher this year with our, uh, swing shift officer, Officer Powell's doing a really good job. He got eight grams of meth and $1,900 the other day.
Good job.
Yes, sir.
Good job. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, it was a really good report.
Thank you, sir.
Phil?
He got, he got $1,800.
Yes, well, 1,925, I believe. Yes, he did, no, it, it is, it is in our evidence room, sir.
Did he split it with somebody?
No, sir, not at all.
Uh, that was a question I asked, would this additional officer, you are seeing an increase in everything, in all the activities in that?
Well, we didn't get an additional officer this year, we decided we wanted to raise it, but we've switched the shifts to where we have a swing shift from three, from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM.
But I thought both of last year, you were, you were down an officer.
Yes, sir, okay, yes, sir, yes, sir, okay. Well, getting up to full staff, yes, sir, we're getting, and we're still down one officer right now.
Right, but you have, you have an additional officer this year as compared to last year.
To where we were last year, yes, sir, we were down two for a lot of the year.
So, you're seeing an increase in activity based on that?
Absolutely, yes, sir. And you should see that in the monthly reports that come out from Ms. Callis.
Okay, no other questions. Paul?
What was the, the variety of the penal code violations? You had seven of them?
The, the variety of penal code violations would be stuff like if they had theft, uh, stolen property in there, if they had, uh, if they had a gun and it was, you know, they're a felon in possession of a firearm, stuff like that would be our, or, again, possession of narcotics.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.